Good evening, everyone. It being 6:00 PM. I'll call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. It's Monday, January 13th. And this meeting will be on YouTube and broadcast on local cable and is under the permit of the Governor's modification of the open meeting laws till March of this year. We'll see what happens then. If you'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under our individual liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of the regular session minutes, meeting minutes from December 2nd. Should be in your packet. Are there any questions?
I make a motion that we approve regular session meeting minutes from December 2nd, 2024.
Second, we have a motion in the second. Is there any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next is the regular meeting minutes from December 9th, 2024.
I move that we approve the regular section meetings from just minute meeting minutes from December 9th, 2024.
Second, we have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next is the Police Department has a new officer, Nicholas Trinkay? Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Yes.
Happy New Year to you.
Just wanted to take the time, Mr. Officer, which we all had to introduce our newest officer, Nicholas Trink. Nick is a job role resident and graduated from Baycat in 2016. He's been in the forming field. He's a former in his last job at the Police National. As we know, he did less civil service in 2019. He gave a test. Our last test, we actually, Nicholas is our third higher off that test. He went to the Boylston Police Academy and he graduated in December. And is currently in his FTO program. So about 12 weeks where he rides along the series of different officers who go through the different shifts, learning different aspects of the job. So we anticipate him ending that probably about close to the end of February. And then he'll be able to hit the road and be serving the time of office. He's been done a great job so far. I think he's going to fit in as well. He's been in some of our community engagement activities while he was in the academy. So it shows a potential.
Great.
Which is so important as you all know. So very happy to welcome him aboard and introduce him to you all.
It's great to fit into the community like that and being a resident that's, you know, a town over. You know, this familiarity there. So that's good. Very good.
Welcome.
Oh, I think he's got a whole song.
I'm Nicholas Trink. Let's hear everybody. I want to say thank you to this opportunity. I'm very excited to see where it goes. I look forward to getting everyone.
Very good. Very good.
Normally we'd have the clerk come and swear him in, but she's busy. She's got some folks across in the office over there. So go ahead and shoot over there. Again, thank you very much.
Officer Trink local.
Stay safe, officer. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next item, we always celebrate residents who have hit the 100-year milestone. And we have one that's celebrating her 105th birthday this year. Is there anyone? No? Okay. Well, the way you looked, I thought. But it's Natalie Bluen. She was presented with a citation earlier. And I don't know, I had a chance to look up the statistic and only 0.03% of people in the United States make it to the 100-year mark. So she's a five-time, so that's an even smaller percentage. So that's quite an accomplishment. And we do recognize that milestone in the community. So wish her happiness and hopefully we'll see her next year. Next is an update from our long overdue update from our librarian supervisor, Sandra Murphy, the director. If you'll step up, Sandra. Good.
All right. Thanks, Sandra.
Wow.
Here I am.
Well, we wanted to give you a little update. And yes, sorry, I was supposed to come several months ago. My husband was diagnosed with leukemia.
Sorry to hear that.
So he's doing fine. But it's been a few months, so I do apologize for that. But thanks for having me back. I'm happy to be here. I wanted to kind of update you on our strategic plan. We were here about a year ago. The plan was completely fresh off the dress. We all document. If you don't have one, I'm happy to share with you. So we wanted to kind of update you on what's been going on this year at the library. First, I'll start, you don't start? Okay. I'll start with the strategic plan. So it's been the driving force behind everything that we've been doing this year. Significantly, a lot of the action items were works in progress. They're ongoing items that happen all the time. Things like increasing our partnerships with the schools. So that's something. It's not the one and done. We're working on that constantly. And the senior center as well. So we have a few good things in the works that we're planning with both of those institutions. We're really happy to collaborate with them. Sometimes we send librarians to the middle school library to help out with their organizing project and things that she's up to. So we do a little collaborative work on that. It's always been fun. We love to get out in the field, so to speak. One of the things that was on our strategic plan was to apply to the LSTA grant. It's a statewide grant, so it's pretty serious grant. It took a few months of work between my assistant director and I to compile all the data and then we send them a copy and then they hack it up and we have to refresh it. Lots of red tape, but we were awarded the grant for $20,000. So that was really exciting that happened in the fall. And that was to create what we call the Nest, which is a small business incubator. So it's a refreshed space up in the second floor. Was a periodic reading room. And now we have a lot of tables and chairs up there for people for meetings and workshops and use the space to promote and educate people in small business information. Rich.
Always happens.
And so that's been going really well. It started just a couple of months ago. We've been having, we've been having monthly workshops in the Nest space. Doesn't she know you're in meeting? So, okay, so the Nest is up and running. And we're now getting all of the technology good to go. We have large format printing capabilities, laminating, heat press. We have kits to loan out for people who do online and social media marketing to kind of help run their own businesses, whether they're super small or medium sized, I guess. So that's available to everyone and we're working on promoting that year round. So it's grant funded for the first year. And then we're working on establishing like a board advisors to help us move forward with that and make sure that it's around for a long, long time. So I see it as something that will fully grow and change depending on what the community needs. That was grant funded from the LSTA grant and the Mousser grant, which we always apply for. So let's talk about statistics this year. We're doing great. We're doing even better than last year. And I do have to say a lot of these are projected because we're mid-year technically. The strategic plan is fiscal year, but all the stats we compile are usually calendar year. So we're halfway through and they are projected, but they're fairly accurate. We have a pretty good idea of what our biggest programs are going to be and we can estimate how many people are going to come to them. Also, we know our hours and the big months and big weeks that we get a lot of people to come in. So the stats are pretty solid and I'll get back to you with the official stats. And hopefully we're really close. But the annual visits are projected to increase by 10% yet again. It increased a lot last year. I want to say it was like, no, I don't want to say it because I don't want to be wrong. But they went up a lot from last year. And I keep on telling my staff and my trustees, like, we have to plateau at some point. So don't think it's going to keep on going up and up. But we might just be finding that plateau. We're still kind of moving up as far as people coming in the building, people coming to our programs. We're still trying to find that sweet spot. This is how many programs we have. This is how many people are coming.
Success is when you're up there. You don't want to.
I don't want it to go down.
Right, right. So.
I just think like, yeah, it can't keep going up. And then it does every year. So I just think we're doing all the right things and we're doing things that people really love. And so they're coming in and they're telling their friends. Especially our youth and family programs. They're the lifeblood of the library as well as different, I would say, one-on-one help with people, reference help. And I have some stats on that too. But I just want to tell you about the annual visits first. So we have, we're expecting about 62,000 people to come. So this 10% increase from last year. And the programming is really what's bringing people in the library. So you can see my cute little graph up at the top, top here. But over the years, it just keeps on going up and up. So we're projecting about 14,000 people coming to all of our programs this year. And it's about 500 programs. So that's a lot. And I would say the success is probably due to those repeated programs that people get wind of that happen every month. Cookbook love, Tom posted that one, I think. That's a popular one, but we get, you know, 20, 25 people every time. And that is one of our mainstay programs. So that and like storage, my learning, our weekly children's programs. You can expect 20, 25 people to come. And when you do that, you know, five times a month, there you go. But.
Yeah.
So our primary attendance, we are expecting it to go up by another 28% this year. I'm really excited about that. And I think the friends are too. They take one dollar for the programs. Fully funded by them and any grants that they look at. So I think they'd like to see the numbers that we have too. About 10,000 registered borrowers for our library. And most of those are most residents, about 70%. And then under, then the middle section says services snapshot. So we've been, this is kind of new because we just started keeping very detailed statistics about what services we're actually providing. And I thought you guys would like to know this because it's very interesting stuff. So we have a couple of people who usually sit down with patrons who come in and they need detailed help really to sit down and do their unemployment paperwork or to file for different housing needs. So we started keeping track, okay, what is everyone asking for help for? So about 20 people a month are getting help with social services. And that includes housing assistance, unemployment, citizenship and job registration. And that's really important work, even though it's not, you know, the numbers aren't like 1,000 people a month or something. But still, those 20 people are getting really, really valuable help. And sometimes they're sitting down with, you know, Evan or Jess for an hour or two. Usually it's like an hour and a half, something like that. So they're getting really one-on-one service, which I think is really important. That people really appreciate. So they come back all the time. And then about 100 people a month are being helped with computers and technology. And that's huge. We always kind of knew that Webster was not a very tech advanced community. Just in the library itself, we always get computer questions. But now we know that 100 people a month are coming in and sitting down with Evan or Jess and getting help with their laptop or anything on the computer.
Is that like a course or just help?
It's not, but we did start teaching computer based classes this year. So on the bottom, I put a grant schedule this year. And on the left, you'll see the little laptop. So we got $15,000 from the Association for the World in Small Libraries to buy laptops. We bought the two laptops and a charging case and all the cables and all the stuff for it. And now we're doing monthly tech workshops. So we go get a huge crowd. We're kind of twining with the time of day that it's at. But I would say about 10 people in the class. And we're starting a really, really basic, so here's a mess. This is what a computer is. We started there and then we're kind of building our way up. And you'd be surprised at how many people have never really played with a computer. So that's been really exciting. And we're going to start doing more like online tutorials and doing them on YouTube so that people can watch them from home and from our website as well. The next grant we got, I told you about this already, the Nest and the Mousser trust and the LSTA grant. And then I got a grant from the United Methodist here to do Saturday series of family programs. So we call it So Much Fun and it's happening. We wanted the cheesy name possible. January to March, every Saturday, there will be a family program. It's hardly free for everyone. And we're really excited. We're having all sorts of usual. How many come in?
Yes, I know, Ashley. Yeah.
Book character costumes. What are we doing? Minnie doll. We're doing all sorts of really fun, sweet things. And bringing people together in the winter where usually they might just be hang out at home. But why not be playing for the library instead? So that's my little lunch sheet that I brought for you. Let's see. I think that was, that was kind of it. Oh, I did want to tell you, I know you guys have a goal to reach out to the Spanish speaking community. So we did hire a lovely gentleman named Marco. He speaks Spanish and he just started a few months ago. And he's available for anyone that's watching or that might need help that speaks Spanish to come in. Who's really sweet. He's staff from Spain. So the dialect's a little bit different, but he's worked in the work for it and he's happy to kind of help anyone that needs it. So I wanted to tell you that. So thank you for my interest.
That's great.
Thank you, Stephen. My name is Rich Francis, currently serving as the Chair of Board of Trustees with the library. And I just want to echo the comments that Sandra made. Very proud of the progress and the amount of effort that the Director, Assistant Director, the Trustees and also with the support of friends have made in terms of the progress that this, the library have made and the attractiveness of the library to the community in general. The issue here is that we have a great success and sometimes success could be a double edged sword, right? So you do it well and you're, and all of a sudden new demands and new needs start to increase. And, you know, with the limited resources that we have, I think we're doing extremely well to deal with all the programs that we have and with the creation of patron counts and all those types of things that are going on. But I do need to indicate that sometimes it can become very difficult or not have a threshold yet, but I think we're approaching the threshold. Where it's going to be difficult to add additional programs in the future. Resources are what they are and you can't stretch them any further. There's no magic there. Everybody knows and understands that. Also, I thought it was very interesting because we've had conversations with different libraries. And one of the things that we've heard is the Dudley Library is very pleased that we're not open on Wednesday afternoons because their patron count goes up dramatically. And the same applies to Saturdays. So they have some additional hours and those are hours that we can't provide currently. But we're working as best as we can. We've stretched ourselves probably as much as we possibly can. And in terms of the future, I think what we need to do is to certainly maintain everything that we do today and to provide all the services that we provide today to the community. But if we want to continue to grow and certainly 62, 60 or 62,000 patron count is not a small thing to look at. So our folks are busy. They're not just hanging around waiting for something to happen. Admittedly, the community, you know, has needs. And we're doing that as Sandra mentioned. We're supplying technology support. And we're also with daily operations, managing everything that we possibly can. So what do we do for the future? We continue to work as hard as we can. I'm very proud of the staff there, Sandra and Evan and all of the other staff that are there. But if we want to look at what we can do for the future, I think we need to think about and consider adding some staff. Okay, now, we've brought this up a number of times. And I know that everywhere that you go, budgets are tough, things are tight. It's just a matter of what do we want to accomplish in terms of what the future might bring us? And do we want to continue to let this library outshine the other library in the area? And it does. So I want to thank you for your time and your consideration and your thoughts on this. And we appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Well, I thank you and the trustees and you, Sandra, and your staff. I think you've made quite an impact on the community in a relatively short period of time. And the numbers are showing. And that fulfills a need evidently that was in town. So great work. Great work.
I have a thought this morning that it will be almost four years in March that I would have been here.
Time flies. Yeah.
Time flies with your head.
Yeah.
To the chair, I have a couple of questions for Sandra. First, what strategic planning at the library taught me was it's not my dad's library anymore. Although I think my dad would be there trying to figure out how to use a mouse. It's really a community center providing some vital services to the community. Not everybody is a strategic planner and we have planning on our agenda tonight. We have history on our agenda tonight. Could you talk a little bit about why the strategic planning process was useful? Does it continue to still be useful? Is it something we should look at as a town?
Yeah, it gives us something to kind of guide us. So it gives us some values. We have a great set of values and a set of goals. And we use that constantly, always checking in with the strategic plan to say, okay, is this where we should be doing? Is this, is this perceived worthwhile? Is it kind of in our plan? And if the answer is no, then we say, okay, well, it's really cool, cool idea, but maybe we don't go for it now. It's also, the action plan is kind of where the action is. So every year you update it and it can evolve from year to year. And you always set like reasonable goals for yourself, things that you can actually achieve, but also that are a step up. So expanding your community outreach or, you know, something that you could do, but that might take a year to do. It's really, the strategic plan is for five years. And then the action plan is annually. So I get a lot of use out of the action plan. That is my guiding light. And I kind of go back to it all the time. In fact, at the last trustees meeting, I brought it back to them and said, okay, in red, here's everything that we're working on. And the goals that we have set for this year are really kind of ongoing things, like I said. It's not usually one and done because you're spending a whole year on it. And then we're going to reevaluate actually at our next meeting and say, okay, what should we prioritize before the end of fiscal year? And then at the end of fiscal year, we'll say, okay, do any of these transfer over to, transfer over to the next year? Or, you know, can we kind of drop some of them? So it's interesting also to see how your action plan can evolve over one year. We actually just kind of redid it from the strategic plan. We said, well, there's a lot of things on here that we don't think are useful. Let's redo the action plan. So it can kind of just be a fluid document as well. So it can kind of just be a fluid document as well.
Thanks.
And it's important to understand too, that you need to have your list of those non-essential ones that you can't achieve, because then it's just another piece of paper that comes up somewhere, and it's wasted. This produces actual tangible results and effects.
Yep. Now, you brought outside, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
You brought outside assistance in. When did you reach that point that you realized that you probably needed outside? Did you?
For me, it's the very beginning, because I had this process before.
Okay.
And I would say, my first time, I did not have a consultant, and it all fell on me, and it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
You guys probably know that it's a lot of work. Consulting is really helpful, they kind of do the nitty-gritty, and the guy can say, okay, now we're tired of all this, now let's talk about that. So I would totally recommend that. We use like a library-centric person.
Yeah.
But I'm sure there's other consultants.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Through the library.
One question on the NEST. The library provides wonderful services for somebody that's trying to create a new business. I was wondering if you are able to provide services from outside organizations like accountants and attorneys?
Okay, so we do have one attorney onboard who's providing pro bono work up to a certain hour limit per month, and we have had people that are already taking advantage of that, so that's, and I expect in tax season, that will increase as well. So we do have one person onboard, and that's kind of where the advisory board comes into play, because if we have some key townspeople who could help either connect to those services or to provide those services themselves, then that would be really important for making sure that the NEST is useful in the future. So that's something I'm looking to grow as well.
And through the chair, I guess along those same lines, the NEST also have, can do workshops in Spanish, there's a group you're working with?
Yeah, so E for All we're collaborating with, and they are Worcester-based, but they do offer workshops in Spanish.
Are you looking to market that more, the NEST?
Yeah, so we have like all the internal paperwork in signage, and it's on our website, but really what we need to do, and we are doing, is going and networking. So we're going to WTBA, presented there a couple of times, going to just every event that we can go to, Evan and I are trying to attend.
And I assume you're looping in the town planner, so that
Right.
she can point people.
Yeah, yeah, so Evan's on a town committee, which you guys are on, the downtown revitalization. Yeah, so we're trying to get the word out there more, but it's, you know, we're traveling slowly sometimes, and he kind of takes that on the ground, walking around and talking with people about it.
And just one quick one, is it too soon to talk about the other big issue, the NEA grant?
Well, I think we can talk about it a little bit. I'll just preface whatever you're going to say by, we are applying, we're in the works, we're applying to a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts for their Big Read Program. We're trying to bring, we've been bringing major authors to the library, bestselling authors, to speak to the town and community members, but this would pay for speaker fee completely, so we're in the works, whatever she's saying, we're, it's in the works.
Pull the reins.
And I only mention it because there's a historic preservation heritage, Webster is a, you know, destination place, vision kind of piece to it too.
This grant offers a lot of community collaborations, including an oral history project, which is what you were talking about, and really exciting collaborations with different community members and other nonprofits, so it's gonna be very exciting, but we haven't applied yet.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Just a big thank you for everything that
We appreciate it.
Congratulations on a hidden grant here.
Not that hidden anymore. No, no, it's, it's been discovered.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next is discussion and possible vote to approve the amendments to the entertainment license for Indian Ranch, continued from December 2nd, 2024. Let's see, oh. Now, I think you had sent a request, I think back in November, and explained in previous meetings that you're competing with more venues, and you're trying to make the business meet those demands. And you had listed a number of requests. One was to change the number of night shows to 12. The second was to remove the limit of no back-to-back night shows. And the third was allow Sunday night shows on holiday weekends. And the fourth bullet was one additional Sunday night show during the season. Now, we talked about, there was a public hearing, we had talked about, you know, neighbors, the noise, the traffic, the boat access, and we're trying to, you know, balance all of that. And I think some of the things that we're coming up with is that, number one, did you have any feedback on the noise requirement or guidance from the state?
We did get some general guidance through our Health Director, and that may seem like an odd mix, however, apparently that comes under the noise pollution. So the only guidance was actually rather antiquated and was really not really pertinent. We'll put it this way, us conversing right now is at a decibel level that will cause damage if we do it for more than 20 minutes, so no pressure, Mr. Chairman. But it was really, the guidance was virtually of no value to us, so.
And the other comment, I think you had questioned, I think Sundays are probably
Sunday nights.
An issue.
Right, that's, I think, when the original, your application was originally filed, that was the one concern that the police chief had too, was Sunday night concerts.
So I don't know what the other selectmen, we were here to discuss it now, but does anyone have an opinion of any modifications to the present license? I have a suggestion that I think you expressed, you're not looking to increase the number of shows, but just to make it more flexible, so that you can book the events, yes, and you're not competing with a dozen other locations. So I think that, you know, I think we're at six now, you're requesting 12 night shows. I think a happy medium to see how it goes and to, I'd like to get feedback, and I'd like to propose maybe extending from six to nine shows this year. And I know we've talked about trying to track the shows and the number of complaints and the noise that, you know, related, and see how that plays out over the next year, increasing from six to nine. And I think Sunday shows for now, or even on the holiday weekend, probably Sunday night period is probably not something that we want to look at right now. So I don't know what, how the board members feel.
I agree with you on the change of the night shows, we're trying to balance your needs. I understand that you have an increased need for night shows, and that you're up against a competition who will provide those night shows. But I'd like to limit it to nine right now, and I agree, I don't want to do Sunday nights, I want to start doing Sunday nights now. And I also don't want, one of the reasons I don't is because I don't want to have back-to-back Saturday, Sunday shows. So I agree with you, change the number of night shows from six to nine, and not allow any Sunday night shows.
Through the chair, I came in thinking 10, so we're not that far off. And I'm just curious, if we were to allow Sunday night shows, how many are we talking during the course of the season? Would just be on holidays, right?
Yeah, holidays, I think we just ask for the one-up, just because, like even this year, we had a one-up on a Sunday, and our issue is, you know, every time this comes up, it's coming to you guys and asking.
Right, right.
It just, a thought occurs to me that if we're looking for feedback on how it goes, maybe we should consider one Sunday night show, so we have feedback and see how that goes, so that we're not
Well, there's already one that we've granted
We've already approved one.
For this year, yeah. So we could, what we're looking to do is track the shows from the events that you publish, and track, and compare that to the number of calls received. And I'm also asking if you would be open, some of the selectmen go to the shows, some don't, some live in the lake, some don't. For those that are less integrated into, you know, the Indian Ranch and the lake life and all of that, I'm wondering if you'd grant permission for one of us at certain times to go in like at the second half of the show and stay till the exit, and just to walk around the perimeter and see?
To that point, I believe the license allows the board of selectmen to attend concerts.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not looking to attend, but
Not a 10, but
I'm more than happy to have you come.
And just to see, you know, there's certain shows that are probably going to be louder than others, and just to see for ourselves what the impact is. And then we'll review it next year, and come, you know, early, we can review it as soon as the season's over, we don't have to wait till January, because you start booking right away for the next year. So we could, yeah, we could review this again after this season, if you're agreeable to that.
Through the chair, one more question. Would it help to allow back-to-back Friday and Saturday nights? Would it help you if we allowed back-to-back Friday and Saturday nights instead of Saturday, Sunday?
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer not to do Saturday, Sunday. A Sunday night show would be very rare, as it is anyways, because our staff doesn't want to be there Sunday. It's like we had one up this year. We're not out there trying to book Sundays, so Friday, Saturday.
Yeah, I wouldn't prefer that, but it's probably Saturday or something like that.
Well, it's still going to be the same number of night shows, whether it's, you choose to do it on one weekend. And we can look at that and see, do we get overwhelming complaints on Saturday, Sunday, Friday, Saturday, you know, and take a look at the data.
But right now, they couldn't do a Friday, Saturday, right? Because it's back-to-back, we'd have to
Correct, that's right, we would have to allow back-to-back on Friday and Sunday night.
I'm embarrassed, I don't remember, excuse me, sorry, through the chair, what was the police chief's concerns with Sunday nights? I don't remember.
I don't, was his letter still in the pack, or is that?
I didn't see it.
Antiquated from, I'm not sure. I think it is major concern, I think calling from a conversation is simply concern about the number of complaints they get, you know, before a workday.
Yeah.
You know, I just think that was
People sort of wind down.
Yeah.
The next
Through the chair, police detail, like what do you have requirements for that?
It depends on the size of the show, and like the type of music that's being played.
Okay.
But we normally have at least four to six officers.
Okay, because I know, I live past that way, I have to go through the traffic sometimes, which, I live by a venue, I totally understand. But sometimes I see a police officer out where the traffic goes on to 16 there, and sometimes I don't, so I just wasn't sure. And I think maybe, like if it was to go to the 10 o'clock at night, or sometime at night, maybe to think about having an officer there, just because there are people who park across the street and stuff like that, so that was just
I mean, it's almost always an officer there.
Okay.
Probably where there's not, the traffic's starting sometimes.
Yeah.
It's a bit, but it's just, I'm just focusing more on that, but it is part of their details to
To be there, right, yeah.
So we already have six night shows, and we've had, oh, I'm sorry
No, no, as you can say, through the chair, like Mark, I came in thinking 10. I'm comfortable with nine if you, but you may want to try the, if we're experimenting the Friday, do whatever we have to do to try a Friday, Saturday, back-to-back also. And one thing you mentioned when you came last time was you talked about you policing the bands, pretty much, you know, when you hear something that's off, you make sure that they're doing that, and I would just urge you to continue to be the good citizen to do that.
So what's the, I'm sorry, I have one more question, because I'm feeling very obtuse. We're talking about Sunday night shows, and people worried about the work night, but what I'm looking at here, we're just looking at it for Sunday before Monday holiday.
Right.
So, so I'm not quite sure what the objection is to the Sunday night shows.
I don't know either what the chief
I think it was just, again, pre-workday complaints. And again, keeping in mind that not everybody has a holiday, just because it's a holiday for some sectors.
Well, forgive me, but if I take that logic, not everybody has Sundays off either.
Good point. Or Saturdays.
Yeah, it's Saturday.
Do we want to allow one on a holiday? You already have one show on a Sunday night, are we looking to allow one more on a holiday weekend to see?
I'm completely comfortable and understand people not wanting that noise level Sunday before a workday. I'd be very happy to have, try one on a Sunday before a holiday.
Let's try it and see what the feedback is.
Is that amenable?
Is that part of the nine, or is that a, is that part of the nine, or is that an additional? That would be part of the
Well, I'd be
That's fine, I just want to make sure that
Yeah.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I mean, it's only two
Right.
Probably a weekend, it's really, I don't know if that'll happen this year or not, so it's gonna be hard to kind of judge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'd be fine with that, and I guess if something came up in the future, somehow we'll be getting on, and we can come to you and ask for that here.
Any other questions? Are we getting to a point where?
Well, we still have to resolve back-to-back shows.
Well, I'm looking to not accept back-to-back shows, but I think that's a little bit of a burden, have night shows back-to-back on Friday, Saturday night, I don't know.
No, I thought that was one of the fundamental requests that you had.
Right, I mean, there are going to be occasions like this year that we have back-to-back night shows.
Right, just not on Sundays, as part of a back-to-back.
And when they're back-to-back, would they be the same band? Or different bands?
Not necessarily, no, like this year, it's two different bands, so we would have that one band to get into a night show.
I think you were talking about a band coming in, having played the prior night, and then having to come in and do an afternoon show, and that was, that was difficult. Like you're looking to have relief from the requirement that you can't have back-to-back night concerts.
Correct, just with booking, because it does end up being, like we had this year, we had two different bands, three different one, and
Sure.
They're played during the day. Some get a Friday night, and some of them on Saturday, and we can't play Saturday a day.
Right.
And that's good, and that's part of us coming to ask it for these amendments, are more because when we book, we don't always have time to now, oh, get over to the town and see if we can do that to that. Because that could take you guys a couple of weeks, or wait in between, so in the meantime, they're calling another, then we
Well, we're looking to increase two more, three more nights.
Right.
So that would mean it's potential you could have a Friday night and a Saturday night three times, and then six other nighttime shows.
Well, we did back-to-back, I mean, Well, we did back-to-back and we, it would be hard to do, because that'd be four weekends of back-to-back night shows, which is never going to happen.
Yeah, yeah.
But you want the ability to, that's, that's my understanding at least.
I think, through the Chair, if we're going to try and allow them to have a few more nights to go to nine, I, I think we kind of really look at removing the limit or, or going, coming up with, okay, you can do it three times, because that, if you do three back-to-backs, that's six out of their nine and, you know. And then we can always revisit and again the following year.
Yeah.
And see, but.
I mean, that would be helpful too, if you just wanted to say.
Sure.
Three times a year.
Right, yeah, something to give you a little and then we can figure out, okay, is it just not going to work?
And then there's three other night shows.
And then, then, right.
So.
Yeah.
Right, back-to-back, not including Sundays except for a holiday.
Except for one holiday, yeah.
Except the holiday Monday.
That would give you some.
Say that again?
Allow nine night shows, six of which could be back-to-back for three weekends, so that's six.
As long as it's not Sunday.
Right, as long as it's not Sunday and then there's three other night shows during the season that.
Do you want to increase it that much by up to three or more trial, trial and error number?
Well, that's up to, up to, you know, I'm.
And see how it works out.
I'm personally fine with three. If I were to make it so, I'll go from my 10 down to nine, but if I understand that, if I were to make a motion, I'd be too.
I mean, basically, we're talking a day and a night show.
Yeah.
Versus two night shows on the same, you know, it's the same number.
There is a difference between a night show and a day show, you know, if you're living on that thought.
Yeah, yeah. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I'll make a motion, then we can, we can talk about it some more so that we know what we're talking about. Make a motion that we allow the, the number of total night shows to go from six to nine night shows. Within that, we allow, we're also allowing the one Sunday night before holiday night show and allowing up to three back-to-back Friday, Saturday night show, no, three back-to-back night shows excluding Sundays, you could do a Thursday, Friday, I suppose, right? And allow three back-to-back night shows.
Now, would that Sunday night include, be inclusive of the nine shows?
It, it is in this motion.
Yeah, okay.
That, yeah, that should be part of the nine.
So that'd be seven, you know, if you do three back-to-back shows and one holiday night show, that's seven of the nine shows and.
And, and the back-to-back cannot be on a Saturday, Sunday?
Oh, right, that.
So you're not allowing.
No, no Sundays except that one Sunday night, holiday.
Can I, can I ask one clarification? You're going to allow three back-to-back nights on a holiday weekend?
No.
No.
I don't know if a.
On a Friday, Saturday, basically.
Okay, no, but on that one holiday weekend, you're going to allow on a Sunday. Could that be a, could that be part of a, like a back-to-back, could that be Saturday?
And Sunday?
Sunday? I, I know, I don't want to confuse this, but I just want to be sure. Just curious if.
I would prefer not to do that.
Okay.
I would prefer that we stay away from Saturday, Sunday nights on the weekend.
So on that one holiday, there's only one night show that weekend and it could be on a Sunday night. Right, is that?
Correct, could be a Friday, Saturday.
Could be Friday, Saturday or Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, but it can't be a Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So do we?
Kelly, get all that?
So we need to restate the motion? Do we, do we understand the motion?
I think Kelly would, I think Kelly would appreciate if you restate.
I think nine night shows during the seasons.
Nine night, nine night shows?
No Sundays except the one holiday night of your choosing and up to three back-to-back night shows. Is that?
Of the three, yeah. Not, not to include Sunday nights.
Excluding that.
And that each allotment of nine shows.
And the one additional Sunday night we already approved.
Right, right. Do we have a second on?
So I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any other discussion? We have it clear? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, good luck and hopefully we have a nice season for everyone. Yeah. Next item is a public hearing. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we get through the public hearing.
Second. Four, somebody want to read it or?
I, I make a motion that we open a public hearing to discuss the approval of the application for junk dealer's license for La Muschio Trucking LLC. The license is currently held by the Plant Brothers at 114 Worcester Road in Webster, Mass, and this is a continuation from the December 2nd, 2024 meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I understand.
Do you need a second?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Kelly, poll the board.
Yes.
Lieutenant Taylor?
Yes.
Lieutenant Decker?
Yes.
Lieutenant Rogers?
Yes.
Attorney for the Board?
Yes. Okay, well, I understand that you have met with the Rep, Conservation Commission.
Yes, in December, we had a very good walk-through with Mr. Williams, Conservation Agent and Building Inspector. We put together a cleanup plan for the sector of the property that is a concern and we filed that plan with the, with the Conservation Commission. We went before them last, last Monday in which they added a few more items to our plan and we incorporated that into our plan, we refiled that with Mr. Williams before we came up here today. We were in agreement, the Conservation had requested a few additional items and there was no objection.
Nothing major from this, was there any?
Well, just on, on the removal, they wanted to add a silt sock placed on the roadway, Route 12 Culver, to stop any downwater filtration.
Yeah, yeah.
Part of the particular while we're cleaning and then also some reseeding and signage to not disturb the landings afterwards.
And you're in agreement?
Yes.
With all of that? I think the information from the board outlines a, was it like a three or five-year plan?
Yeah, and it works out to be basically a kind of seasonal plan.
Yeah.
Where eight, eight months out of the year, Mr. Lucio, they're cleaning up, there's five different phases, so basically we're cutting it up where we'll clean up the part that's adjacent to the road that they receive first, then we're going to switch our focus to the larger items in the back near 395, clean that sector, work our way forward, so that we start with what's most visible and then we work our way forward to, to get the whole project. And then during the winters, it's very hard for Mr. Muschio to work because that would be his program to ground. So we really have, I think it's, it's a plan that we can stick to.
Okay.
Through the Chair, question, when it says on phase one and the rest of the phases, remove visible debris within 25 feet, that's removal and, and you're going to take it off the property?
Well, we're going to start by, by moving it back in the part of.
Right.
We want this junk licenses because what we do pull out, we would like to sell, we would like to sell it, sell it off, off the premises, but there will be some good items that will be kept, but it's all ultimately for sale and it's not any permanent fixtures that we want to, want to keep. The client could probably explain that a little bit more.
Right, some of the stuff in, in phase one and phase three go together, so you've got to save the two that there, make something out of them.
And I think each phase is followed by an inspection on site.
The other, the other changes that the Conservation Commission wanted is that as each phase is completed, the Conservation Agent will come and approve that, report back to his board and then before we move on to the next phase.
Through the board, if I might, is it, is it our understanding that, I know there were some changes made as recently as today, but that the Conservation Commission, Board of Healthers behind this?
Yes, they have actually voted to approve this.
Great. And then, so my second question is that the line here, it says the application mainly seeks the license to sell off existing scrap and junk on the premises. First of all, what's the plan after, after you're done? And secondly, what activities will be, commercial activity be taking place during this two-year period?
It would be selling a junk from, from the premises and the client could explain that a little bit more.
Trucking and offsite ultimately, you know, the stuff they're not going to use.
This license as it stands would allow them to bring more in, right? If they wanted to?
Yes.
So, yeah. Is that part of the plan as well to continue to?
Not right at this time.
But the license would allow it.
Right.
Yes. But you need the license in order to get this cleanup done, is that correct?
We want to be able to maximize the income as, you know, things that are being taken out as well.
Value.
To some people it's junk, but to other collectors it may be a little step of that value.
And they would need that license to be.
And purchase from this.
Is there any more questions?
No, no.
We asked for a plan and I think.
I'm sorry?
So we asked for a plan and.
Yeah.
And we have it then, and it's approved by the board.
So I have to entertain a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there any other discussion? Kelly, can you poll the board?
Lieutenant Decker?
Yes.
Lieutenant Taylor?
Yes.
Lieutenant Decker?
Yes.
Lieutenant Rogers?
Yes.
Attorney for the Board?
Yes. I'm happy to see that you're, you're making this effort after so many years.
Been an issue for, for many decades.
Yeah.
Will take my clients some time to.
Yeah.
Get it cleaned up.
Yeah. There's a plan for progress in place, so we're happy with that. And that means that you're applying for the license so that the, and the transfer of ownership is going to be?
The, the transfer of ownership property is already been approved.
Okay.
So we, we would request that the Selectmen grant the license.
Okay, so the previous owner's request for license can be recent.
She's here, I don't, I don't know, I don't want to speak for her. That license won't be used.
Okay, okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion that we approve the request, the application for a junk license for La Muschio Trucking LLC.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you and good luck.
Good luck.
Happy cleaning.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, on these next two items, I might be able to be of some help because I have spoken to Ian Morgan.
Yeah.
And Ted Avalos about each of these committees there, so. When you're ready to.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I did speak to Ian and Ted and following up on conversation that Earl and Tom and I had in prepara, preparing for the meeting and explained to them and they were supportive that, remember Ted came in asking for a CPA study committee and obviously we've been looking at a master plan update for quite some time. And what we discussed was essentially that, you know, this kind of be a three-phase process, meaning the board agree, vote to establish these committees, at the next meeting, the board has provided a scope of services for each committee and a recommended makeup of each committee. And then presumably we'll come out of the next meeting with a scope and committee makeup and at that time you'll also ask for volunteers, so at the next meeting you can actually appoint people these, to these committees. So Ted is fine with that, Ian obviously thinks it's a good idea, so this is what Earl and Tom and I discussed last, whenever we met last Wednesday, so that would seem to be something that everyone can agree to. And I hate to skip ahead to, you know, another agenda item, but I think for, for both of those, it's kind of the same, same, same concept.
Through the Chair?
Yeah.
I'm glad you said that because I was going to ask for charter. You know, what is the, the role, what are the duties, what, what's expected out of them? And so that everybody would be on the same, same page.
Oh, yeah.
Voting for it.
So it, it's up to us, let's deal one at a time, I know they're tied together, but they're two separate programs. So it's a discussion and possible vote to consider creating a Committee for Community Preservation Act called CPA. And so is everyone in agreement that next meeting that we put on the agenda, that we come up with a, develop a scope and should we do that on our own or as a subgroup or, not a subgroup?
Yeah, I was going to ask both Ted and Ian individually to provide a draft scope for the board's review individually for each one, so you can review those and decide what you may want to do in addition to that or instead of that, so you're not.
That's a good starting point, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Can, can we get that before our next meeting?
I'll get it to you as soon as I can get to find Ted wherever his current adventures are, so.
And and also their ideas on the makeup, you know, certainly.
I will ask that too, yes, yes.
Does that sound reasonable so that we have that information?
Absolutely, yes.
Yep. And do we need to vote at this point in time? I think not.
I mean, other than, no, you don't, you don't have to vote, I think, you know, consensus that this is how you want to approach it, I think that's.
Yeah, and we're looking for that and the vote will come.
I think next, next, when you want to approve a scope.
That's out of the gate at that point.
Yes.
And, you know, moving right on to the next one, the possible vote for creating a master plan review committee, I think that's, and I think we also want to set timeframes for both, you know, or get suggestions for the process when we figure out the scope and start putting a timeline together.
Yeah, I think we've got some work to do before we can do that.
Now, as far as a, where do we look for guideline for a master plan review committee scope and membership?
I will, between me and Ian, we will come up with a proposed scope for the board. I know the last master plan committee was extremely large.
Yeah.
And I know we talked briefly about making it more manageable, whether it's seven or nine people.
I think we're seven or nine, yeah, that's probably.
Because it's, it's too unwieldy when you have to try to get all those people together. Even, even in the days of remote meetings, that's still a lot.
No, I think I mentioned at our meeting that I was on the master plan committee last time and we had too many people.
I, I think I have a little bit of another concern, I'd like a little bit of a discussion of, it says master plan review and update, is that really the format that we want to use? Is that the best way to do it?
Well, I guess that's, that's part of the discussion, I think, because obviously we are looking to update the master plan, however, there's two pieces and do you want to combine these two pieces?
Strategic.
There, well, there's, you know, there's, there's a review element.
Yeah.
Again, of, okay, are we following our master plan? Are we, how are we doing? And then there's the element of updating it, whether or not, you know, you want to kind of have this as one committee who more or less remains a, more or less a permanent committee, going through the update process and then as a monitoring committee after that, I think that's a little bit of a policy decision. I think one of the, one of the things that I don't want to say could be missing, but the follow-up to a master plan can be difficult because it's. the follow-up to a master plan can be difficult, because it's not just a bureaucratic exercise, it's a community exercise. So it's not something that our office can do. It's something that we can help with, but that's, so. The other piece too, which is not on here, is, I know, I've mentioned to you before that I think it was last year's Regional Planning Council District Local Technical Assistance Program, DLTA, we had suggested that maybe they form some sort of a database for communities to actually pursue and track their master plan goals. So they finally have a pretty good draft in place. Ian is a, is a database professional, which some of you may know, she's pretty much a professional in everything, it would seem. So she's working to put the final touches on this. So that's, again, something that we asked for, how are we going, boy, a year and a half ago now, and they finally have a product that looks pretty good. So, so safe to, happy to say that's something that can get rolled out to all the communities within their, within their district. But that's another piece that hopefully would be helpful for a ongoing effort by, by a review update committee. So that's a really long, convoluted answer to a simple question.
No, no, my question is not simple.
All right, so I don't feel as bad then, okay. But that's, that's really an excellent question that we discussed a little bit in our agenda setting meeting, is what's the committee? Is it one committee? Should it just be a master plan update committee, and now we worry about tracking and?
Well, I guess we spent a lot of time talking about a vision.
Yeah.
And, and to me, that was the start. And from that should come goals. And then it translates into what Sandra was talking about, the action plans that are tracked. Now, someplace, the master plan that we have, or we've done in the past, and we're going to review and whatever, they come together. And what Ian is doing with that one, or what people are doing with the database, is great, because you have to track it. I mean, we all heard Sandra talk about how they track and they use those, those things. So it all has to come together, in my opinion. And I don't want to lose any of it.
No, but if you want to give some thought to it, maybe get back to me with some of your, how you might put it all together in your head, and maybe we can kind of think about that, maybe even speak to Ian.
I was going to just suggest that, to pull Ian in.
I'd love, I'd love to work with Ian on it.
Why don't we, why don't we plan on?
I really would love to do that.
Having that follow-up discussion, you, me, and Ian.
Would she like a café in Sun Marco?
I suspect. I suspect she'd like that. I would have an issue with reimbursing her for such activities, but.
No, but I would like to talk about it.
Okay, well, we'll work that out there. Excellent.
Okay, so why don't we just leave that for now, and let, let it incubate for a little bit? And we'll talk about it next meeting. Next item is discussion and possible vote to place a sign for the rain garden at Memorial Beach, I think, in your packet. There's been a request that, you know, crossed our desk before, came from, I'm trying to find it. Eyes don't fail me now.
Page 30 of 33 on your packet.
Yeah. If we recall that the rain garden appeared on Memorial Beach, and it was a surprise to many of us.
We didn't know what a rain garden was.
Right. But for those that still don't know what a rain garden is, basically, it's a pile of rocks. But underneath the rain garden is where the science takes place. And that was a requirement for the lake committee that was five, six years ago, talked about the runoff of the parking lot at Memorial Beach. And that, that evolved, and the rain garden took place. Again, it's a low spot at the end of the parking lot, near where the, the safety boats are parked. It's a depression filled with rocks, but it's under the rocks that chemically act on the effluent from, from the parking lot as it's released into the water. And there was a court request, I don't know how many of you know Ernie Benoit, but he was a lifelong Laker, and I think involved in a lot of activities, and was a proponent of keeping the lake as it is, pretty much. So there was a motion made, not a motion, but a letter sent by Robin Jewell on behalf of the Webster Lake Committee to perhaps dedicate that area to him. And I was thinking of maybe a sign, you know, a simple sign, just talking about, you know, the rain garden at Memorial Beach dedicated to Ernie Benoit, and just some marker for saying, if we want, we could have a little dedication in the spring, or, you know, something like that.
And we could even explain what a rain garden is.
And that's what I'm saying. We could explain, you know, the three-page explanation of what a rain garden really is and what it does at that.
I think there's another one, right in front of the hospital.
Is it marked? I don't know if it's a rain garden, or a collection as it runs under the street, but.
Which should be easy to do that, because the historical commission, when they moved the sign, put up some information, so we could do that fairly, fairly easily. I'd like to thank Dr. Jewell for writing that on Ernie Benoit. That was a wonderful statement.
Yeah. So I've asked Rick to meet with the DPW director and maybe come up with some signage, and I'm thinking something simple, you know, maybe a three-foot, you know, narrow sign, Memorial Beach Rain Garden, dedicated to Ernie Benoit, and two iron posts on the ground, something to that effect.
Has anyone talked to the family?
Yes, Robin has talked, and they're all, yeah. There's no, no opposition to create this.
I think he's a perfect choice.
Yeah, I do too, yeah.
If you vote to do so, we will, not putting a sign up without your.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With someone else's name on it. It's dangerous territory unless there's a.
So, someone want to make a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion that we place a sign for the rain garden at Memorial Beach and dedicated to Ernie Benoit.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are we unanimous? Okay, so Town Administrator Report, next.
Yes, I'm going to do my best to stay on topic this time, and so I'm going to try to read it as much as editorialized. So Thompson and Brian Av, I know that's something we've all been concerned with. Two jersey barriers we placed at the end are still there, and I have received, I don't know if any other members have, specific complaints from Ms. Shammer seeking removal. I've also communicated with the first selectman in Thompson, was also inquired about the barriers. I've assured both the Webster, that Webster Public Safety officials have been to the site on multiple occasions, even with apparatus to ensure that there is adequate safety access to the driveway, which is in Thompson. Our appeal of Thompson Planning and Zoning Board's Commission's approval of the special permit for 16 single-family units and eight duplex units based on the same grounds as our appeal to the original approval remains pending in Connecticut Superior Court. Our appeal to the second hearing is based upon the same, same.
Premise.
Thank you. Same reasons, and that should be filed any day now. If our Connecticut appeal is unsuccessful, and we may have the grounds under our own zoning by law to prohibit some action and access from Webster. I do mention, though, that I want to thank Ian Morgan. She's been very diligent, she has great expertise and some real creativity. Wouldn't want to be in a fight with Ian Morgan, leave it at that.
And I think you had brought up some documentation that a access was granted for the residence of Dr. Shammer.
Right, there's an old.
In the history books.
Right, and that's being reviewed by council. One of the, one of the legitimate questions that arose is that those deeds go back before as a public way. So once there's a public, there's an acceptance of a public way, all prior deeds and other legal instruments are superseded. Now, again, whether or not the particular, this particular deed would fall under that category remains to be seen. And as I mentioned, there may be other options. We've talked about, you know, possible or partial road abandonment, there's other types of tools we may have at our disposal. At some point, it may well be that we are holding an executive session to discuss legal strategy if it gets, seems to get a little more complicated. Our Town Hall Auditorium RFP is due January 17th, and this is for the restoration of the auditorium. One expected proposer has done some structural testing, analysis. I have required, though, that if there is some form of report that is available before the due date, that that be sent to me so that I could send it to other people that have sought interests in making proposals. I mean, obviously, the concept is, you know, fair play. But allow them to do that under those conditions, they've been happy to do that. And again, I've beaten this up pretty good, but once we get a proposal, it's not out of the question, it's probably likely that it may trigger a determination that there's construction involved here. And from what I understand, based upon rumors as to what the proponent is willing to spend, it's very hard for me to believe now that there isn't some form of construction, perhaps even significant construction. And I say construction, I don't, we don't decide what construction is with regard to state procurement law, state determines what construction is. So if construction is going to be part of this proposal ultimately, then there are, there are a whole set of construction procurement statutes the state has, so that would be the next process to go through. And the other piece, as I had mentioned to the chairman, is Mr. Robert met with me today, and one of the questions he brought up was whether or not prevailing wages would be applicable here. I don't know the answer to the question, but it's, again, it's a very awkward, kind of an odd duck type of a situation, where a private party has, is essentially proposing to, you know, you know, do their own work with their own construction people, or some sort of in-kind services without the town actually spending any of its own specific cash. So it's a little bit of an oddity whether or not prevailing wages are applicable here. It's a legal question. I suspect it won't be a difficult legal question to answer. So keep you informed on that. Our Business Breakfast, January 21, is the next Economic Development Working Group Business Breakfast. The last, the first one was on August 22nd. For the coming meeting, the EDC has invited approximately 15 people representing 12 businesses. The focus is predominantly downtown, but there are a lot of other businesses, especially the larger property owners in town who are invited, along with our state rep and state senator. The agenda is fairly simple, you know, the goal is to keep it short. If these meetings become long, they're not going to be well-attended. People kind of have to know they're going to be in, they're going to be out of there in an hour. And a lot of it is getting, getting input. The Nest is going to be one thing that's actually discussed briefly at, at that meeting. And basically, essentially, brainstorming, updates, brainstorming. Again, I call it, I don't write it here, but I've said before, kind of the good, the bad, and the ugly. You know, what are we doing well, helping the business climate, what are we doing poorly? And I think at the last, the first meeting, I think there was a little bit of thawing that had to happen, I think, by the end of the meeting, and I think some of it was after the meeting casual discussion, you started to get some, okay, this specific, this specific zoning should be addressed, okay. Okay, well, that's the kind of stuff we want, we want to get to, so. So it went well the first time. Hopefully, it'll be a little, even a little more thawing as we go along here, so hopefully this will be an ongoing effort. Our Selectmen's Meeting Room, our Greg Robert, our IT Director, has, has been on the case here. This has been a goal for a long time, as you well know. It has been inspected, tested, analyzed by acoustical specialists. And as you can see from my update, it seems that the room has three times the reverberation that is healthy for broadcast environment. Okay, so, so there are some recommended solutions. I think, I think one of the important things here is someone needs to make decisions with regard to this. And our Cable Advisory Committee, although there's a specific legal reason by statute that a Cable Advisory Committee is set up, and that's to, you know, to negotiate further renewal of cable licenses, that's the statutory role. That body had done a lot, had conversations about this specific point, as well as other things that we might be looking for capital grants to fund. So I would, my recommendation is that you allow what is our Cable Advisory Committee, call it anything we want, to review the results, the recommendations, because, again, there's visual impact, sound impact, visual impact, so have a sense of what this room will look like, you know, if there are certain types of buffering, et cetera. So, again, someone needs to do that. There has to be some sort of consensus that, that this is acceptable, this is recommended. So I'm suggesting that you, you know, kind of, well, what I would like to do is go forward and have the, put those people in the same room again, to deliberate on what Greg Robert has, has brought from the acoustical company, and it may even be that we're meeting with them. But again, it's one of those situations where someone needs to do it, and I don't want you to come in one day and see these things hanging from the roof and say, "Rick, what happened?" You know, there needs to be some deliberation. So that's what I plan to do. If anybody has any objections or alternative thoughts?
Who's on the Cable Advisory?
Tom. Me. Carol Marchand, who is the, she's basically the chairman of every committee in town who can't otherwise elect a chairman. Evan from the library, and the IT Director from the school system, I can't think of his name. And Greg Robert, our IT Director.
Okay. It seems like.
And there's a, at large, there's a gentleman, I can't think of his name.
Yeah.
Very Greek name. Has some good expertise. So if he's watching, I apologize, so, but we'll find him.
Is that Angelus?
It is.
Okay.
Thank you. Hope he's got a good sense of humor.
Yes.
So that's the way I want to approach it, unless anybody has any suggestions or objections, so. Treasure Collector's Office, I don't know if you, when you came through today, you probably saw the setup on the, on the right of the conference room, I mean auditorium. It was very loud in Town Hall last week. When you saw the office that had been demolished and cleaned out, it's amazing how large that office is, the Treasure Collector's Office. But those of you who actually pay taxes, you know, physically pay taxes, I know you all pay taxes, probably understand, you know, how inappropriate the setup was, 100, 100 years old. So there was a, something sentimental about it, but completely inappropriate. So that's ongoing, it's going so far on schedule, and I think we're all impressed. The meantime, the current office condition is pretty good. I think if you see, if you had a chance to take a peek, the challenge is heat, you know, so first thing in the morning, some of the heat stays on all night, you know, electric heat, whether, it's kind of has to be done. I do want to point out, though, the effort, MAFRE insurance has been terrific in, you know, donating workstations and partitions so that we can make it a legitimate office environment. So, so once again, they do a lot for us. And usually, we don't say anything, but this is such a visible situation, I want to, you know, thank them, because we'll be reaching out to them for other things in the future here too. So we already, already have a shortlist.
Tim and Tina brought me into the new demolition, I saw my way in. Tim and Tina brought me into the new demolition by somebody way in and.
Excellent.
Stabbed and how big it was.
It's huge, isn't it? So, yeah.
You can hear an echo.
Well, we were. Well, we were lamenting, how do we get stuck with the office we're in?
You know, it's so.
What happened here? Somebody just didn't know the right people a long time ago.
That's unacceptable.
Yeah, right. And lastly, and I'm not going to read this, but I just want to point out Hazard Mitigation Plan is something that will be coming to the board's attention, whether it's February or March, it's just about done. It's a very lengthy planning process. Not everybody's required to do it, but if you want to have certain resources available in, only that it's a really good, obviously, thing to do in terms of continuing continuity of operations and emergency management. So I'm not going to read this, but it just bring it to your attention for the sake of time.
Through the chair, do you, do you actually do hazard mitigation plan exercises? Have you done that in the past?
No.
I don't, I haven't, I don't believe so. Well, I haven't been a part of any. I, I don't know if our, if their emergency management exercises, our fire department is involved and if they.
Oh, I asked that same question when they were devising their plan.
Yeah.
And there's no actual.
Sometimes it's a good thing to do.
Yeah, I think that's a notable.
In almost corporations of any size.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
Could be important.
I promised Courtney and Kelly I would be a little more concise than I tend to be, so.
Well, good job.
I'll make a motion that we approve and accept the town administrator update.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yanis?
If I might through the chair, just on behalf of the citizens of Brian Ab, I just want to thank you for the aggressive.
Well, we've got a few things up our sleeve still. Well, you know, what's going on is wrong.
Right.
It's just wrong.
Yep.
And, you know, and if, you know, and if we, I like to think if we have to spend a few legal dollars, I hope that sends a message to the rest of the community too, that this is, this is just not acceptable. And it's the same, same with, you know, our Rosemont situation. That's just, it's just not fair. And you can't always do something about, can't do something about everything, but it's also a bad precedent that you're going to allow private project.
It is, it's a great effort and, and you know, that's not a giant neighborhood and I'm glad we're protecting, I'm glad we're protecting.
No, and I think the residents, the residents do appreciate that. They've, they've made that clear.
And they've taken a very active part in the whole process too, so it's, it's good to see that.
Well, their rights have been violated.
Yeah.
Their rights have been violated. So forgetting the merits of the project and the, you know, how we feel about what a neighbor is doing to another neighbor.
Yeah.
Their rights have been violated, so.
Yep. Okay, just to finish off here, we have vacancies from the board appointments. One on the Finance Committee, one on the Water Sewer Commission, three on the Historical Commission, and one on the ADA Commission. The list is growing short, but we still have about five opportunities, actually six opportunities to fill. Future events, Saturday, February 1st, 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, the Fourth Annual Winter Lual, the Webster Town Hall Auditorium, 350 Main Street. And I'd just like to mention on January 27th, the Webster, the Oxford Chamber of Commerce is presenting a program for the builders, the owners of Stevens Linen in Dudley, which I think will eventually impact, you know, that broader area circling into Webster too on the lower Main Street side. So I think it, it might be of some interest to see that and what their plans and how many apartments and people are going to be influenced in that community. Also, the future meeting date would be Monday, February 10th at 6:00 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. And that's it. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourned. Thank you.